All right, welcome. Aloha Kako, welcome and good evening to everyone. My name is James Huestis. I'm the president of the Waimea Community Association. Thank you for joining us online tonight for our regular monthly Waimea Community Association town meeting. As always, I encourage you to follow, like and subscribe to the Waimea Community Association on our social accounts. You may also find relevant information and resource up on our website at waimetown.org. We do strive to keep our accounts active and up to date. And we're streaming both live on YouTube and our Facebook channels this evening. So you can either catch us on either of those channels there. In hopes of connecting with numerous members of our community and across the community here. So at this point, I'd like to recognize our WCA board members, our vice president, Mary Beth Lecheck, our treasurer, Jeremy Madrid, our secretary Nancy Carr Smith, and our directors Patty Cook, Michael Donnelly, Riley Smith, Lonnie Olson Chung, and David Greenwell. On behalf of the Waimea Community Association Board, we are grateful for the support shown by you, the community, to hold virtual meetings in this setting. I thank you all for your interest in joining us for our past meetings and for viewing and sharing those recordings. You're welcome to revisit those videos up on the WCA Facebook page or up on our YouTube channel. The Waimea Community Association is a nonprofit organization that strives to promote open participation by all of the Waimea community, develop leadership, and support the smart growth of the region. And if you'd like to support the work that we have done and help continue our effort in connecting with our community, you are more than welcome to donate and join as a member. Please visit our website, waimetown.org, or send us an email at waimetowncommunityassociation@gmail.com for more information. Your contributions and your membership allow us to reach out and connect with the community in this setting. And of course, support the work that WCA has done over the past sixty years. Mahalo nui for your support. We will begin this evening with a number of community updates and spotlight our nonprofit of the month. And then we'll spend the majority of tonight's meeting with our educators and administrators from our primary and secondary schools here in Waimea. We've allocated time to share your questions with our presenters tonight. And we appreciate community members sending in questions ahead of time. We will also try and capture some of your questions on the live feed. So please use the live chat to pose any of your questions. And we'll do our best to share them with our guests here this evening. Thank you to my fellow board member, Mary Beth Lecheck, for joining me this evening and presenting these questions. So without further ado, I'm gonna really go into the meeting here. And at this time, I'd like to welcome back in Captain Evangelista and our community police officer, Justin Kabantin, to share with us a few updates. Welcome, Captain and Officer. Good to have you back.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for having us. We'll go to Justin for the updates on the our crime report. Yeah, Justin.
Okay, thanks, Kat. Hi, everyone. Good afternoon. So I'll just real briefly touch on our crime reports for the month of July. There was four assaults, we had three burglaries, four CPDs, we had fourteen drug cases, twenty-two thefts, one stolen vehicle, one unauthorized control of a propelled vehicle, and eight major incidents for the month of July in the South Kohala District. As far as our traffic, I'll go over that really briefly as well. We had sixty major traffic collisions for the month of July. One of them was DUI-related. As far as speeding, there was two hundred seventy-four, two hundred seventy, uh, two hundred forty-seven, excuse me, traffic speeding citations, one hundred twenty-four moving citations, fifty-one seatbelt citations, and seventy-one cellphone citations issued. There was a total of seven DUI investigations initiated in South Kohala, and there is two hundred and fifty regulatory citations issued. We did also have forty-four reckless driver calls for the month of July for our entire district. And our officers, they did about twenty, excuse me, forty-one grants after overtime grants to include speeding, seatbelt, distracted driving. So our officers are out there, they're staying busy. A lot of our drug cases are initiated from traffic stops. So they are busy out there. And I know a lot of school members here, a lot of people in charge of the school. So I don't want to take up any more of you guys' time. But I just had a couple announcements I wanted to make. Our fishing derby that happened on July twenty-third was a huge success. We had about sixty kids show up with their younger brothers and sisters and their families. A lot of prizes was donated to us from local vendors and merchants islandwide. And they're all giving out to the keikis. We wanted to put on an event for them during the summer. Earl's really stepped up. They gave us musibis. We had hot dogs for them. So they had a great time. We do have coffee with a cup. I'll be at the Starbucks in Waikoloa on the twenty-sixth. And the weekend prior, there's a Waikoloa charity walk. And I'll be down there as well. Now, that's a Saturday. But that's about it, I got, Kat.
Okay, thanks, Justin. I just wanted to add a couple things. On our crime report, one of the criminal property damage cases we had is the complete destruction of the bus stop on Pukalani Road. So much so that DPW had to come out and remove whatever was left. So that's a real bummer for the community because now people waiting for the bus don't have any shelter. Hopefully DPW can get something back up. And hopefully, I mean, if anybody has any information that could help that investigation, please call us and let us know. The other thing I wanted to mention, which is kind of top of mind for a lot of people, is the recent jewelry scam. The guy's going around selling fake jewelry. So last month, we put out a release, we, the department, put out a release because we were able to arrest somebody for that, for some offenses relative to that. And since then, there have been multiple reports here in our community, as well as across the island, of sort of the same thing happening. And most recently today, Kawai made an arrest for individuals for pretty much the same thing. And if you look at the names, the names are sort of familiar with, or they sound similar to the guy we arrested. So this scam is happening statewide. And what it is, is these guys are approaching people described as being pretty aggressive sales tactics, but saying that they need cash because they lost their ID or somehow they just need money to get back home. And what they're offering is what they purport to be really valuable jewelry at hugely discounted prices. And what our victims have done is they've unfortunately purchased the jewelry and then later taken it to an expert who's deemed it to be fake. So what we would encourage people to do is be really skeptical about somebody offering you a ten thousand dollar Rolex for a thousand bucks. If you are gonna make a purchase, have it appraised first. And if the person isn't willing to work with you on that, then it's probably not worth your time and money, and walk away. But if you are victimized, please call us, make a report so that we can open an investigation. The last thing, I know I'm over budget on time, but the last thing I wanted to mention is we did have some pretty serious car accidents last month. There was one on Kawai High Road, which caused some really serious injuries. That person is still in the hospital. And there was one up on Old Saddle Road where a teenage girl passed away. And then just recently, there was one on Hilo side by Honomu where a teenager passed away. It's really not acceptable for our people to be dying on the highway. So let's please, as a community, encourage each other, hold each other accountable. You know, let's encourage each other not to rush. There's no need to speed. Your destination isn't going anywhere better late than never. Please slow down. And if you see reckless drivers and you can report them safely, please do so. We may not always be able to make a stop right there, but we do try to follow up with the owners of the vehicles and let them know that there was a complaint made. But we need everybody's help with that, and we need everybody to drive with aloha. And so thank you for the time.
Thanks, James.
Thank you, officers. Appreciate you, Captain, Officer Kabantin. Thank you for joining us and appreciate your announcements, your updates, and these salient points here for the community. So thank you for all the work that you do to support our communities. Mahalo nui. All right, so over the past two months, the Waimea Community Association held three virtual candidate forums, giving the community and interested viewers an opportunity to learn about candidates seeking your support in a non-debate setting. And our state primary election is just over one week away. And we wanted to once again provide critical information about casting your vote. We are grateful to have the ongoing support of the League of Women Voters. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization that works to protect and expand voting rights, ensuring that everyone is representative democracy. And through advocacy, education, and litigation, the League of Women Voters actively empowers and engages voters across the country. So with that, I'd like to welcome back Brad Clark, a director of the Hawaii County League of Women Voters, to provide important information about the voting process in 2022 this evening. Welcome, Brad. Good to see you again.
Thank you very much. It's good to be here. And again, the League of Women Voters really appreciates the Waimea Community Association for letting us take part in these events and pass on the information about the elections. I have a set of slides there if you want to start. As everybody knows, we're very deep into election season right now. You can go on to the next one. Actually, you can skip that one too because voter registration closed yesterday. If you're not registered to vote at this time, you can still vote in the primary election, but you'll need to go in person to one of the voter service centers. There's one at the West Oai Community Center or Civic Center in Kailua Kona. And there's one at the Alpuni Center here in Hilo. I'm over on the Hilo side. So those are open every day from eight-thirty to four, except Sunday. And on the official election day, which is August thirteenth, they'll be open from seven AM to seven PM. If you're not registered, you can go there and register and vote right then. If you want to go in and vote in person, you can also go in there and vote in person. They have accessible voting equipment. So if you have a disability, you can vote on the accessible voting equipment. The ballots, if you are registered to vote, you should have already received your ballot. Some, I know many people have already mailed back their ballot. Actually, I was down at the county election office today. And they actually began processing ballots yesterday in Hawaii. Under the new law, they can process the ballots beginning before the election so that we don't have to do it all on election day anymore because they get so many ahead of time. If you have your ballot and you want to mail it in, make sure you mail it so that it's received by the clerk by seven PM on election day, August thirteenth. If it's not received by August thirteenth at seven PM, they're unable to count it. The law doesn't allow it. So make sure it gets in by then. If you want to drop it off in person, there are drop boxes throughout the county. The one in Waimea is at the Waimea Police Station. You can drop your ballot off there twenty-four seven up until seven PM on election day. There are, the other drop boxes in the county are, of course, at both of the voter service centers, the one in Hilo, the one in Kona. There's also a box at La Pahoihoi Police Station, at the Paho'a Police Station, the Napalehu Police Station, the Rodney Yana Memorial Hall in Captain Cook, the Waikoloa Village Association, and the North Kohala Police Station. All of those have twenty-four hour a day drop boxes where you can drop off your completed ballot. If you want to go on to the next slide, James, make sure when, if you're turning in your paper ballot, you have voted both sides of the ballot. This is a two-sided ballot in this election. Being a primary election, the first question on the ballot is which party's primary do you wish to vote in? You select your party, and then you find the party on the ballot and only vote within that party for the partisan contest. Then below that, you'll find the OHA races and the county races, which everyone votes in regardless of party. Remember to fill out, make very clear your choices by marking the ballot in black or blue ink. You put your ballot inside the green secrecy envelope and then seal that within the return envelope. Make sure that you sign that return envelope. Also, the county clerk cannot count your ballot unless they can compare your signature to the signature that's on file. So if you're gonna mail it, make sure you mail it so it gets there by Saturday, August thirteenth, or take it to one of the drop boxes or the voter service centers and drop it off in person. If you want to go to the next slide, James. Important dates, just the only one to remember right now is August thirteenth. That's the election day. You have up until that day to return your ballot or go in and vote in person. And I won't get into the general election now because we'll have that to worry about in a few months. If you want to go on to the next slide. July twenty-sixth is when people started receiving their ballots. The early voting sites at the voter service centers are open. If you need to request an absentee ballot, now, it seems funny that you would ask for an absentee ballot when we're all voting by mail. But if you're gonna be away from your home on election day, you can still request an absentee ballot anywhere in the world. You can have it mailed to you. So if August sixth is the deadline to do that, if you have any questions about doing that, I would recommend you call the clerk's office or check, there's a very important website, elections.hawaii.gov. Again, it's elections.hawaii.gov. That's a state office of election website, and it has all this information on it. It's a tremendous website. If you want to go on to the next one. A new service that the state has this year that I signed up for, which is, I think is pretty cool, it's called Ballot Traxx. If you go on to this, you can go to ballottraxx.net, or you can do it through elections.hawaii.gov. You can sign yourself up with your name, address, and your identification, your driver's license number. And the county will actually notify you when they've mailed your ballot. They will notify you again, either by email or text, however you ask them to. They'll notify you when your ballot's been received. So it's a really great service. So I signed up for it, and I did give the notice right away that my ballot had been mailed. And then a day later, I got my ballot mailed. So I haven't returned my ballot yet, so I don't have the notice. If you go to the next. The other website I want to talk about, tell you about, is the League of Women Voters website called Vote411. It's at vote411.org. In Hawaii, we don't have a voter information pamphlet like many states have. So the League of Women Voters maintains this website. We have actually contacted every candidate for public office in Hawaii and asked them to participate. Now, it's not mandatory, so they haven't all participated. But if you go to vote411.org, put in your address and say, "See my ballot." It'll tell you which races you get to vote on. If you click on those individual races, it'll give you a list of the candidates. And those candidates that have filled out our questionnaire, that information will be there. So it's a really great website. It's vote411.org. You know, go to the next slide, James. That pretty much covers the election. Again, I've covered over the voter service centers are open through election day, except on Sunday. The nine drop boxes are available twenty-four seven around the county where you can drop off your ballot. Make sure, again, that you have signed that return envelope because the county cannot open the envelope and count the ballot unless you've signed, they can compare your signature. So that pretty much takes care of it for me, James, unless you have any questions.
Thanks, Brad. Yeah, there was one question that came in online. And just to be very clear, the drop boxes are available up until seven PM on that Saturday, thirteenth, right?
Yes, they're open. Yeah, on election day itself, they will close them at seven PM and collect all the ballots that were put in there on election day.
Okay, thanks for catching that one. Yeah, so there are a couple of new boxes. When we last reported this, when Les had Brad and his colleagues with League of Women Voters, there are a couple of new drop boxes relatively close to Waimea and La Pahoihoi and also in Kapaua. So those have been added to the list for possible Dropbox use as well, if you don't want to mail it instead. And so those are options. I think that's all I have for you, Brad, but that was wonderful. Appreciate having you again.
Hey, thank you. It's always good to be with you.
Yeah, grateful for your time and really your efforts in getting out there and empower voters. We know you had your registration drive recently in Paho'a, Hilo, and Kona, so thank you for doing those as well.
Yes, you're welcome. Aloha.
Aloha. All the best. And a couple of things there. So Vote411, I'll put this, we'll make sure these are in the chat going forward, Vote411. And then also the State Office of Elections website for more information. And then, yeah, you're welcome to go back and review our saved recordings for candidates in this area. If you're interested in learning about more of those candidates, if you haven't yet cast your ballot. And that's about it. So let's get out the vote, Waimea. Appreciate you, Brad, and all the best. Aloha.
Aloha.
All right, next up, I'm gonna welcome in Faye Mitchell. She's the Community Relations Manager for North Y Hospice to share some news about an upcoming event to be held later this month. Welcome, Faye.
Hi, thanks for having me. Yeah, we are bringing back our Floating Lantern Ceremony, finally. The last time we had it was two thousand nineteen. So it will be held once again at the Fairmont Orchid. That's on Sunday, August twenty-eighth. It's from five to seven, usually goes a little bit later than that, but the idea is people get down there. And if you haven't been before, it's for families, children, of course, welcome. And it's to honor and remember those who have passed. And I'm glad there are some school leaders here. It's a great way to sort of introduce to children and families, you know, what we do here in Hawaii and in many cultures to honor those who have passed. And in this way, they get to decorate the paper lantern. And all of these lanterns are released into the bay and recaptured. None of them get lost. We make sure of that. And there are food beverages available. There's no admission at all. It's free. Just a suggested donation for the lantern itself. It's a wonderful event. The last time, I think we had seven hundred in attendance. And we're hearing whisperings that there may be more than that this year because people are anxious to get out there. So that's what I want to let you know about. If you have any questions, please let us know. You'll see signs around town. We can find more information on our website. And yeah, that's all I have for you today. Thanks for having me.
Absolutely. It's nice to meet you, Faye, and look forward to having this, holding this event and being there and seeing everyone in person. So thank you for putting it on.
It'll be great. Thank you.
Absolutely. Wonderful. Now I'm gonna share just a couple of other community, small community updates that are happening, basically starting tomorrow. So let me make sure I'm sharing those to the audience here. And the first one is actually a production being put on by Waimea Community Theater. And this is called Nonsense. It's a musical comedy. The QR code there will take you to a site to purchase tickets. I think you can purchase tickets at the venues as well, but there are a couple of events and opportunities to view this show starting tomorrow evening at Parker School Theater and then through the weekend as well. And then it will switch over to the Kona Oaks Lodge and then to the Hongwanji Mission in Honoka towards the end of the month. So that's an option for Waimea Community Theater, an event that they're holding there. The next one is, it just launched this Monday. It's the Kuku Kapa'e. It's a Kappa show and demonstration put on by Rowan Hufford and her hui of Kappa makers. So it started on Monday at Isaac's Arts Center. And then this Saturday, from eleven to two PM, there'll be a Kappa demonstration at Isaac's Arts Center as well. And so this show and exhibit is being held for the next two months here. So we hope you can stop by and do the work put on by our community members here, some of the beautiful work that's being displayed there. And then lastly, there's a webinar series being put on by Queens North Y Community Hospital, as well as some fellow clinics and primary cares physicians. This is a three-part nutritional series about obesity, hypertension, and diabetes. And there's a link there as well as a QR code and a phone number to help you connect and register for that webinar series there if you're interested in participating and learning more. So those are quick little images I had there. Other than that, just wanted to say if there are other events and happenings, we do our best to try and post on our Facebook page. But wanted to point these couple out here to you that are really ongoing and just around the corner. And as always, if you or an organization that you're affiliated with need help with in spreading the word, please don't hesitate to reach out to us, and we'll do our best to share that with the community. And then, of course, you know, this is still really a transition time for us in the community. And we must still remain thoughtful and diligent. COVID- nineteen really continues to be our cooliana. So please stay home if you're feeling under the weather, wear masks, wear them when appropriate, and really get tested if you suspect exposure. And consider getting vaccinated if you haven't had the chance. And as always, if you have any questions, we encourage you to visit wycovidnineteen.com, which is the state COVID- nineteen portal, or hawaicounty.gov/cronavirus, which is the county COVID- nineteen portal. So those are a quick couple of updates there and announcements. Our next guest, and really for the month of August, the Waimea Community Association will be spotlighting the Prince Dance Company as our nonprofit of the month. And early this summer, I hope that many of you were able to catch Prince Dance Company's production inspired by the beloved Maurice Sendak book, Where the Wild Things Are. And so tonight, we're joined by Angel Prince, who is the executive and artistic director of Prince Dance Company, really here to share some exciting news and learn more about the opportunities for our keiki. Welcome, Angel. Thanks for joining us.
Aloha. Thank you, James. Thanks for having me.
Absolutely.
Aloha, everyone. As James said, I am Angel Prince. I am the founder and executive director of Prince Dance Company and Prince Dance Institute, which you might know from shows like The Wild Things. But Prince Dance Company is a nonprofit theatrical dance company that was founded in two thousand and eight. And we have the mission of enriching the lives of the people of Hawaii and the world by creating thought-provoking theatrical dance works which challenge and inspire its audiences and by ensuring that all keiki and youth who want to learn and perform in the performing arts have the opportunity. So we have three main programs at Prince Dance Company, which are Inspire, Perform, and Engage. Inspire is our creation branch. Since two thousand and eight, Prince Dance Company has been producing one or two original dance productions a year with professional dancers. And we're inspired by environmental and social issues. And we create and produce full-length works for stage and site-specific locations. And our most recent work was called My Empty Body Is Full of Stars, which was the recipient of a state foundation on culture and the arts grant. And it premiered on Kahului TV in December of two thousand and twenty-one. And then we have Perform, which offers scholarships and production assistance for Prince Dance Institute. So we offer scholarships over ten thousand dollars a year for over forty students. And these are funded by generous donations from members in our community. And we have an amazing scholarship committee, which helps organize and distribute our scholarship funds to as many students as possible. These scholarships provide over fifty percent of tuition costs for classes at Prince Dance Institute. Our goal is to continue to grow this fund so that we can provide more scholarships and also build a more robust program. We would love to be able to cover additional costs like costumes and their dance gear and transportation so that there is no barrier to taking performing arts classes for anybody, any student in our community who would like to be in the performing arts. We also do productions for Prince Dance Institute. So this performance that James was talking about, The Wild Things, we produce a show in the winter and in the spring for Prince Dance Institute. And it's really amazing to watch over a hundred and fifty students performing on the Kahului Theater stage in a professional production. It's amazing. And this past show was, it was so great to have all the kids back on stage again. The energy was through the roof. And then our final pillar of Prince Dance Company is called Engage. And that brings performing arts to students who typically wouldn't have access to any performing arts education in their school. So we have two programs there. One is the Artists in the School Program, where a professional dance teacher will go into a school, approximately fifty to a hundred students per school, and teach fine arch benchmarks for the respective grade. And we will be going into four different schools this year with three different teachers, which we are very excited about. And then we also have an interactive dance performance program where Prince Dance Company produces an original work of performance art that has a specific educational theme. This theme this past year was astronomy. And we took a show called Dancing Galaxies to over ten, to ten schools, to over a hundred, to over seven hundred and fifty students. So that was really exciting, teaching astronomy through dance. So that's Prince Dance Company. And Prince Dance Institute is the school under the umbrella of Prince Dance Company, which is a performing arts school. We offer two semesters and a summer program of classes. We offer all styles of dance and aerial dance like trapeze and silks. We also offer acting and gully classes. Our classes are for students ages two, all through the way to adults for all levels. So you can be a complete beginner, or you can be a professional. We welcome everybody and anybody, two left feet, two right feet, it doesn't matter. Come dance and sing and act with us. We've been based at Kahului Theater for the past seventeen years. But I am excited to say we will have our own home this year in addition to our aerial silk and trapeze classes at the Kahului will be in our new space, which is what will be the former Body Pro Space in town. And we are getting ready for our fall semester, which will begin on September twelfth and run through December seventeenth with a final performance at the Kahului Theater on December eleventh. So we are ramping. So we are ramping up for our scholarships to offer to our fall semester students. And that will be again through Prince Dance Company. And for any student who is interested in receiving a scholarship, all they need to do is go to princedanceinstitute.com and register for classes. You would need to put in a credit card to hold your spot or pay the $6 registration fee. And then you can fill out the scholarship application form. The scholarship application form and registration opens on August 8th and closes on August 22nd. And notifications will go out on August 26th. And those scholarships range for 50% of tuition to 100%, depending on need. We're so thankful for our volunteers and our donors who helped make these scholarships possible and really everything that we do. As a nonprofit, we really depend on the community and their support to keep our programs going and our shows and bringing artists into the school. So we are thankful for them and we are always looking for anybody else who wants to get involved. So if you're interested in hearing more about what we do or want to get involved or you would like to donate, you can go to the Prince Dance Company website, which is princedance.org. If you would like to share any of this information for a student you think would be interested in taking classes in acting, singing or dancing or the aerial arts, then please direct them to princedanceinstitute.com. And the fall schedule is already up. Registration starts on Monday as well as the scholarship program opens on Monday. And we don't want money to be a barrier for anybody. So please encourage anybody to come and, and reach out to me, reach out to the website. And we want to get everybody who's interested in performing arts in the class. And if you have any questions for me, you can send me an email at angel@princedance.org. Thank you very much.
Wonderful. Thank you, Angel. Did you want me to share a couple of that video, that little video clip as well?
Sure. Yeah, that'd be great. I sent James some videos of our students in class and also some videos of the students performing on the stage of the Kahului Theater. So I think that's what he's going to show.
Prince Dance Institute is a performing arts school in Waimea. It trains over 200 Hawaii keiki each year in many forms of the performing arts, including dancing, singing, trapeze, aerial silks and acting. Prince Dance Company supports these efforts by providing $5,000 in scholarships each semester for the institute students and produces the institute's spring and winter shows that each have over 100 young artists performing their hearts out on a professional stage. I think profit dance, rich the lighting, thought-provoking works which challenge and inspire its audiences and by supporting our community's keiki in dance and performing arts education. We have been North Hawaii's Performing Arts Training Program for the past 16 years, training thousands of students and bringing the performing arts to students in public and private schools from Kona to Lapa Hoi Hoai. Prince Dance Company has produced over 20 shows for keiki and adults and provided numerous scholarships. Our students and instructors have performed in many Kahului Theater-produced shows in the last decade. We fulfill our
Yeah, I'll pop that last one back up there for the website and links there.
Perfect. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for me? I know almost everybody on this call, so it's great to see you all.
Thank you so much, Angel. Really appreciate you and all the work you're doing for our keiki and our community. And thank you for joining us here this evening.
Absolutely. Thank you, James.
Wonderful. That's amazing. All right. So if, once again, if you're interested in learning more about Prince Dance Company and ways to support efforts, please visit princedance.org and as well as their institute and partnership there. So thanks again and mahalo newi, Angel. All the best. Aloha. All right. We're moving into our main portion of tonight's agenda and appreciate your patience here. Tonight, we're going to be hearing from our Waimea Schools administrators. Really, our, you know, our academic community has faced some unique challenges these past couple of years. And the WC wanted to present an opportunity to learn how our schools are doing, ongoing challenges, their successes and initiatives that are being implemented, as well as areas where the community can get involved to further support our keiki, our faculty, our staff, and of course, the school families. We are grateful to hear from these primary and secondary schools right here in Waimea. Please keep in mind that these academic institutions, different structure, from public to public charter to independent. And this is really busy time of year for our school administrators as they welcome students and families back onto their campuses. And we are excited to have them join us here this evening and connect with the larger Waimea community. So with that, I'd like to welcome in our, our first guest here for this next portion. Going to welcome in our team from Kanoa Okaaina. We have Kanoa Castro, who is the pu'u kumu of the secondary school there, Keo Malani Case for the primary school and Nicole Ryan for the Blended and Virtual Learning Program of Ka'ohaa. Welcome.
Aloha. So if you don't know me, my name is Keo Malani Case. I'm the elementary pu'u kumu of Kanoa Okaaina. I'm also an alumni of Kanoa Okaaina and was a long-term fifth grade kumu for many years before becoming principal. I just wanted to touch upon our mission and our vision. So Kanu's mission is to kulia i kenu or strive to reach your highest of philosophy of excellence guides Kanu Okaaina as we collectively design, implement and continuously evaluate a quality culturally-driven, intergenerational Hawaiian model of education with aloha. Our vision of Kanu is, at Kanu, we, Kanu is being steadfast in cultivating compassionate, empowered, highly competent learners of all ages who are grounded in native Hawaiian culture and language. Upon entering this year, our school governing board decided to have all of our members on our school campus mask while indoors and masking outdoors is optional. Now I'll touch upon our elementary programs. Our elementary program focuses on building foundational knowledge, skills and practices for young learners, learning centers upon four program learning objectives. So the first one being to perpetuate their desire and learning and maintaining relationships to their environment and community. The second being demonstrate their connection to place through observation, identification and independent inquiry. And the third objective being embrace the kuleana of contributing to their community. And the fourth, establishing self-identity by honoring one's genealogy. Overall, we're excited to gear all our project curriculums this school year towards our theme of ku'ha'ahil or Stand With Pride. Some of the elementary projects will take our keiki to new learning heights while intricately learning about topics such as makahanakaike, kupu'ohi and ho'ohakahua and more. Mahalo.
Mahalo. Aloha, kako. I'm Kanoa Castro, the upper school pu'u kumu at Kanoa Okaaina. I, you know, it's, it's really nice to see familiar faces on here. You know, and being that we're, we're all in a, in a pretty tough job in, in this, in this time, in this life. It's nice to see faces that we saw last year. We all survived another year. We're here again, excited to jump in with our students and our families and, and, and build a stronger community together. So I wish all of our other administrators good luck and hopefully we can collaborate in the future. One of the questions was, you know, what are we excited for? And there's so much things to be excited for this year, but I think for, for me, it's really about getting back to community, getting back to Ina-based learning. Like Keo Malani said, it's, it's our foundation here at Kanu. And for the middle school and high school, really building those relationships in our community. You know, although we did it in the last few years in various ways and in alternative ways, it's going to be nice, hopefully, to connect with community again, more face-to-face, you know, as, as much as we possibly can, depending on our, our situation here with COVID. But some of the projects that we're working on for middle school and high school are vaan forestry, engaging students in that, also vaipana, looking at sacred sites of the island of, of this, of this moku of, of North Kohala. Also agriculture and animal husbandry, foods, food sustainability is super huge for us and, and very important in where we are right now. And then also videography and journalism project that we're working with some, some middle school students on. So again, that's the one thing I'm very, very excited for. And I think it's, it allows us to interact with community, interact with other schools and, and really get back to the core and foundation of who we are. So mahalo. I'll pass this time on to Nicole Ryan, who's our Ka'ohaa pu'u kumu.
Mahalo, Keo Malani and Kanoa. Aloha, everyone. I'm Nicole Ryan and pu'u kumu for our K-12 Ka'ohaa virtual program. And I'd like to share that we are at the point where we have approximately 400 keiki across all islands with our virtual program. One thing that I, I'm excited about is the model that we use for our virtual program. As many of you know, you've kind of exited the virtual world and, and we're still here in the virtual world because this is what we do. But we really encompassed Ohana-centered learning, getting the whole Ohana involved and making sure that we have intergenerational learning happening in homes across, across all islands with the keiki in our program. So I'm happy to share that actually our largest chunk of, of students and Ohana come from Waimea. We're on campus on Fridays and excited to be back on campus on Fridays, just as many of you are excited to be back in person. We love that blended portion and we're looking forward to strengthening our community partnerships, including our Ohana partnership and paddling with getting generations of Ohana in the canoe, which is fabulous. So I'm looking forward to a great year and mahalo for the time to speak. Aloha.
Mahalo. Mahalo Nicole, Keo Malani and Kanoa. Thanks for joining us here this evening. Appreciate you. Thanks for, thanks for being here. And next up, we're going to hear from Antikala, kumu at Alokeha Okaaina Mauna, kumu Akima Akau.
Kamehana kako. Aloha. The simplest question from a kupuna to you would be, o vai oi. First of all, who am I? Polale, I am kalaoka, I am wilet kalaoka hakuakima akau. I am a graduate of Parker School, 1979. My first teaching opportunity was in 1995, punanaleo o Waimea. And in 1990, in the early 90s, a group of women with a dedication to revitalize the Hawaiian language in Waimea and its neighboring communities was successful. We opened the doors in 1995. In 2000, I left punanaleo. And again, as a parent and as a community member, I sat on the founding table for Kanoa Okaaina. I worked at Kanoa Okaaina from 2002 to 2012 and started to miss the language. So I went back to Alokeha. Alokeha Okaaina Mauna is the elementary and high school division to punanaleo o Waimea. Alokeha is a satellite of kekula o navihi o kalani o pu'u, our mother school in Ke'au. And we have a sister school, ma'iliku kahi on the Wa'ana'i coals. There's, there's a kaia'puni, which is an immersion program. And most immersion programs, Hawaiian immersion programs are a school within a school whom their principals, most of the time, is your mainstream principal. Alokeha is a kaia'olelo program. Call them I not even a program, is a kaia'olelo school. And a kaia'olelo school is that every member of the staff, from your janitors to the cafeteria, to the counselors, all the way up to your pu'u kumu, your principal, all speak the Hawaiian language. We also communicate, the communication between us, our students and our families, our newsletters, our staff meetings, our halavai, our meetings with our parents are all held in Hawaiian. We are glad to be back. Our elementary kindergarten through sixth grade came back on Monday and our high school, ninth to 11th grade, came back on Tuesday. And our high school, first of all, Alokeha kindergarten through sixth grade through eighth grade is a lab school under the University of Kahului. And 10, 11, 10 and 11th grade is under Honaka' school. We are all glad to be back in the classroom. It's so much easier. The only computer that is on is my computer. Call them I, my, my computer. And for COVID, we encourage our families to keep each other safe. Yes, we all know that mask is not mandatory, but we encourage the mask because we cannot think about ourselves. We cannot think about ourselves. We have to think about the kakou, the nui. We have to think about our school community. We have to talk, we have to think about our personal families. We have to think about our wider community and especially our kupunas in the community. So like already said, masking is optional, but we highly encourage. Every morning when the child arrives and the staff member, we have the Magnus Health App. And that asks questions if they had a fever, if they have a sore throat, if they've been coughing. The green sign allows them to come to school when they see a red pop-up, which they answered yes to having something. We ask them not to come to school. They're not allowed to come to school. And then our nurse, our staff, will contact them and they would, they have to go through with the questions of our, the person who takes care of our health rooms, call them I. She will determine if they need to go to, to the doctors and get a doctor's paper or when they can return to campus. We fundraise, we have a fundraiser which is called Ho'ola. And Ho'ola is our way, it's a fundraiser, but yet that's our way of our school family being able to go out into our community and sharing our language and our culture. We have 33 students from kindergarten through 10th grade and we have 18 students in our preschool program. Our punanaleo o Waimea program. And let me look at my notes real fast if I forgot anything. Hey, maunino kaki kahi. Does anyone have any questions for me? And yes, before I forget, I am not an administrator. I'm just a teacher. So mahalo for that. Any questions? Witnan, mahalo newi. And yes, you know, when the police officer said about these accidents that have happened or I know of a girl who tried to commit suicide the night before last, last night at church. We prayed for our island because the devil is out for our students, is out for our young adults. So we have to really keep them safe. And I believe, and I know as educators, we believe that we need to, really that we need to include that into our lessons, that we need to keep each other safe. But with all being said, mahalo.
Mahalo, kumu. Thank you so much. Next up, I'd like to, we're going to jump to our Waimea Middle School and we're, tonight, we are joined by our principal there, Janice English. Welcome, Janice.
Hi, I, I'd like to do my little slide presentation because it keeps me on task.
You got it. Let me put that up right now.
Yeah. And did you get the 30-second video too the other day?
Yeah. Would you like me to start with that or your slides first?
That's what you have ready to go.
Oh, right.
So our governing board asked us to do a 30-second clip about our school. And we were filmed. It was a very rainy day in Waimea, so it really shows that when we work together with our faculty and staff, we produce a little highlight of Waimea Middle School. So it's about 30 seconds long.
Waimea Middle School is an accredited, tuition-free, public Hawaiian-focused charter school for sixth through eighth grade students on the big island of Hawaii.
I love this school. I like coming to the school. It feels safe, everything about it. When they see the growth that they made, that's just so rewarding to me as a teacher.
And we want to provide that opportunity for children to practice being respectful and then encourage them to go out and teach others to be respectful and kind.
Families choose Waimea Middle School because we offer a safe, nurturing and academically rigorous environment.
Join us!
So in the middle of a pandemic, it was kind of fun to make a little video clip. And everyone says, just be extemporaneous. And then they come along and they videotape you doing things five times. So it was a fun day for the kids to demonstrate what they know about their community and their understanding of cultural practices. So it it was a really good experience for me, and we're gonna do it again because we'll be a twenty-year school in twenty-two, twenty, oh, twenty-three, twenty-four, so twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three. So we'll do it again and create this little overview of what we are as a middle school in Waimea. So we're WASC accredited and we use the term pa'ahana as our tradition of hard work. So we like to emulate the paniolo. And you can continue with the slides because I'm gonna be pretty quick. So our theme for the year is Collaboration for Excellence. It's something we do at Waimea Middle School. These are demonstrations of experiences students have had probably through the past three or four years. So the handprints are what each eighth grader leaves in the garden as part of their pa'ahana, their hard work. So every eighth grader for the last seventeen years has left a handprint in circles. So if you're ever in the garden, you get to see that. One of the experiences all students got last year was the Alex and Duke Deregue Foundation underrode and and shared their experience down at the ocean at Kapuna. All all grade levels got to experience this. And so it was one of those hua kai'i where children feel very connected to their ina. So we are also engaging in vaipana, which is cultural sites around the island. And we have been underwritten with two grants that allow the students to explore the the land and the cultural sites. And that's part of our vision of a place of infinite possibilities, as well as our mission of cultural understanding. And I really liked when Kanoa said that we are collaborative. So even though we represent independent schools, public schools, charter schools, all of us really appreciate the outpouring from the community in all of our partners, all of our donors. We have a mentoring program if anyone wants to volunteer. And believe it or not, we're still looking for a bus driver. So if anybody knows of a CDL who would like to drive a bus, we'd really appreciate that. And we're gonna have our virtual auction, November seventh through eighteenth of this year. Mahalo for your time and thank you to the Waimea Community Association for hosting us once again.
Absolutely. Thank you so much, Janice. Great to see you on here. And once again, it's like about a year ago, we last saw all of you. So it's really wonderful to see all of you on here once again and connect with all of you, see how things are going. Next up, I'd like to welcome in the principal of the Waimea Elementary School, Tammy Picklesimer. Tammy, please take it away.
Aloha, and thank you so much for having me. I'm Tammy Picklesimer, also known as Miss Pickles. So one of the things that I'm looking forward to most this year is having a pickle party. So maybe celebrating a hundred pickles to represent the hundred days that our kindergartners have been on campus. But looking forward to what many, many things that we can bring back and pickle party being one of them. What I'm really excited about this year is that we opened our campus back up to our parents. They got to drop their keke off right to their teacher's classroom and meet the teacher, see the classroom, and really starting to fill and build that community. So it's really nice to have our parents back on campus, even for pickup and and dropping them off in the morning and even coming in the cafeteria and having breakfast and just kind of enjoying and seeing them back. So thank you so much for doing that. We're continuously, we're continuing our focus on what I call the three-one-one, which is the three are focusing on rigorous academic behavior and social-emotional for our students. And then a one is also focusing on our staff well-being and making sure that we continue to take care of ourselves as staff and teachers. It's a tough profession, but focusing on we is greater than me and building that collaborative culture at our school. And then that last one of the three-one-one, building those systems of support. And I think I saw that as one of our questions that might come up later. How are we addressing some of these social-emotional concerns that are popping up due to COVID? How are we addressing some of the learning loss and academic gaps? And so really building those strong systems of support that meet the needs of each student where they're at individually and helping them grow and progress. We're really, really proud of all the great work that our teachers did last year. We saw our, and this, I hope you're excited about this, Waimea Middle, but you know, we saw our ELA, our English Language Arts assessment scores, our Smarter Balance Assessment, beat pre-COVID times. So we're really excited about all that great work. We saw our mass scores, Miss Shelby Lou, whatever, we saw our mass scores get all the way almost back to pre-COVID, two, three years ago. We're really excited. Our teachers are working really hard for their students in the classroom and for the community to address those needs. And and what we're, we brought in Larry Thompson to kind of continue our growth around behaviors and addressing some of those concerns. And and it's all about giving them five and really helping our children understand behaviors and what made that choice not the best one. But then what are the benefits of doing and making the right choice? So having those really positive conversations and teaching responsibility-centered discipline, which Janice, thank you so much. I hear you're continuing on with that as well. So responsibility-centered discipline and what made that choice not so great? And what are we gonna do in the future? And why that benefits us as an individual, a school, community, and a family? So really looking forward to to continuing our work there. I'm really excited to getting back to normal, bringing back the talent show, our holiday celebration that we do and our performances. I'm hoping to get some things going around a science fair and bringing May Day back where families can come and really participate and grow. So I think we got a lot of great things happening here at Waimea Elementary. Our teachers and staff are working really hard for all of our students. And and thank you so much. And it's gonna be a great year. Mahalo.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, Tammy. Appreciate you. And next up, we're gonna move on to Waimea Country School, our head of school there, Amy Sally. Welcome, Amy.
Miss my cue.
That's all right.
Hi, everybody. Thank you, the Communities Association, for having us all back. You know, I was so impressed when we did this before because it really makes it obvious that this community values education. And I, I, as an educator, certainly appreciate that. And I wanna kind of flashback to what Kanoa said earlier too about community. And I think one of the biggest things that we are looking forward to is really getting our community back together, even though we're a really small school. You know, we, with all the unknowns with COVID, we were really driven to to keep everyone separate and in their little pods and cohorts. And we really saw a huge detriment in our behavior of our students and their ability to really function really well in in school. And we really need to get back to our multi-age roots. And multi-age is really more than just how we approach our philosophy and practice of education and and instruction. It really is kind of the heart and soul of who we are as a school. And making sure that we have those older students and younger students connected, whether it's at recess or lunch or reading together as buddies or being on a team. So we're really looking forward to to bringing all of that back. And we feel like we can do it safely with our outdoor space, as wonderful it is, it is. And of course, here in Waimea, having this beautiful weather. And we also have a great staff and teaching. I I was just reading this morning about the terrible shortages in education and teachers who have fled the the profession. And I just feel so fortunate to not only have retained all of our wonderful teachers, but actually was able to pick up another one, which allowed us to move one of our teachers into a support role for the first time, I think, in the history of Waimea Country School, where we really have recognized that the the main kind of deficit that we've seen with so many kids in distance learning and with the struggles of the last two years is in reading. And so one of our teachers, Cindy Aceret, has moved into a reading specialist role. And we, and we'll be able to support not just our students, but all of our our faculty as well in really determining what, you know, what really matters as far as success for kids. I I can't tell you how excited I am about having those kids back in the in the building. You know, we start school a week from today. And I just know that I've already had families telling me, you know, the kids are at home marking their calendars. And some of our kids showed up, they got their uniform shirts in the mail, and they showed up on campus just to wear them and strutting around and feeling so happy and excited about it. And I know that the the families are looking forward to connecting with each other. They're, we're looking forward to having the kids back. We are still, of course, very much aware of COVID. And we are in such a stronger place, as I know all of us are, as far as understanding and how things we can do to keep safe. So we are following the guidelines put out by the CDC and the Hawaii Department of Health, following their summary guidance. And mostly, it's just about what we all do here, just communicating with each other and making sure that we can work together to keep all of us safe in our community. We are going to be doing events again this year, and I'm so excited about that. On the seventeenth of September, we're so excited and happy to have so much wonderful support from friends of the school, whether there are people donating or helping out and showing up and contributing what they can to our process. We're having a little thank you party. So watch for that, all our friends of the school. And then we are looking forward to actually having our fundraiser again for the first time in a couple of years. So that's gonna be very exciting too, just to to get out and be with people, which is a great thing. So so thank you. Thank you for having me. Thank you to my fellow educators. You're a great group to be colleagues with. So thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Appreciate that. And next, we're gonna jump over to Waiparaportory Academy and introduce our interim head of school there, Mr. Fred Warner. Welcome, Fred.
Aloha, everyone. Thank you, James. James, I sent you some slides. Are you able to pull them up?
Didn't seem to get one of them, actually, unfortunately.
Maybe I can share my screen. You okay with that?
Yeah, please. You should be able to.
There we go.
All right. Sorry about that, Fred. Go right ahead.
All good. Thank you, James. Aloha, everyone. My name is Fred Warner. This is my second year as the interim head of school, my fourteenth here in Waimea, living and working. My wife, Deena, is a nurse here on the island. We have four children, one recent graduate from HPA and three that are still with us. We have a ton of excitement on campus as our faculty just returned for their professional development week. And our fall sports teams are reporting to practice. One of the questions was around what we're excited about. And so I wanted to give thanks and just talk about the excitement we have around reconnecting with the community. Last year at this time, we had built out programming for all of our faculty and staff to go into the community and connect with some nonprofits. And today, we were able to realize that we had over a hundred folks out. We were with Waimea Trails and Greenways, Ulu Ma'o Pua Nui, Nakalai Va'a, and Mauna Kea Forest Restoration Project. And it was really powerful to, a year ago, we were, you know, dealing with brush fires. And today, we were planning Ali. And so we're really excited about service learning for our students, connections that we can make with the community that, you know, responsibly, we just couldn't do for the last, for the last two years. For folks that don't know a lot about HPA, our mission is to provide exceptional learning opportunities in a diverse community honoring the traditions of Hawaii. We have two campuses, our village campus, right in town, across from Long's. We have our K-five and our six-eight students down there, two hundred students typically, all-day students. And then up here on Koala Mountain Road, our upper campus holds, is home to about four hundred students. Typically, we have around one hundred and eighty boarding students from all over the world and forty residential faculty that are in charge of caring for for that program. So we we start classes a little later than everyone else on the Zoom, I believe. But we are actively welcoming students and families to campus over the, over the next few weeks for various orientations and trainings. Our academic classes will begin on Wednesday the seventeenth. And you can see here from the slide our drop up and drop off and pickup times, which do tend to impact morning and afternoon traffic flow. In terms of safety protocols, we've all learned a ton in the last two and a half years. We're very respectful of the need to keep everyone in our community safe. We'll stay current with our best practices and continue with our our many risk mitigations. We're, we ended the year mask optional, and we'll continue with that, except for in large gathering spaces. In terms of academics, we're really excited to continue our push, to push our students in the areas of communication, creativity, collaboration, and critical thinking. We've been working for about ten years to strike the right balance between our traditional college prep curriculum and balance that with place-based capstone project work. And so ultimately, we want our students prepared to contribute in a, in positive ways in their learning and living communities. We have mandatory co-curricular activities at HPA. And we know, because we know that students thrive when they're active and engaged in a part of something bigger than themselves. Truly, as we all know, now more than ever, our kids need physical activity and they need togetherness. Physical and mental wellness are critical to supporting the whole child. And helping young people find happiness is what we should all be really focused on. We're working hard to make strides in the area of sustainability. This work involves all aspects of our organization. We are excited to partner with our community to meet sustainability goals and build a better future for our Waimea and our island. We recently announced a commitment to our becoming carbon net zero by 2030. And that falls in line with the United Nations Sustainable Development Goals and Hawaii State Government Sustainability Goals. And lastly, we have some heroes among us, our academic leadership team. I just wanted everyone to see their faces because they're your neighbors and you see them in town. Please say hi to them. They bring a wonderful skill set, both to HPA and to our island community. I also want to appreciate what Kanoa said at the beginning. I think us being in collaboration certainly was powerful for me last year as as a first-year head of school in a very challenging time. So thank you to everyone. It's really good to see everyone back on this Zoom. Aloha.
Thank you, Fred. Appreciate those slides and information there.
Yeah. Sorry, stop share.
That's all right. All good. And last up, we have Stephen Dunn, head of school for Parker School. Welcome, Stephen.
Hey, thank you, James. Thank you to the Waiparaportory Association for for bringing us all together tonight to talk about what we're doing for for our keke. I'll start by saying for our Kiki. I'll start by saying I'm humbled to be part of this this wonderful educational community. I look around the screen and see collaborators and partners and colleagues and neighbors. And and that means a lot that we're all working together to keep education moving forward in Waimea and to keep our, you know, hopefully, our focus will always be on keeping our students safe, but but a little bit different focus than it was last year with with COVID being quite as as front and center. So we will, as Fred mentioned, we also ended the year mask optional and that's where we'll start the year this year. Looking for continued cooperation with our families. If children are not feeling well, then they stay home, or if anybody's not feeling well, they stay home. And we're fortunate enough to have kept kept our cases cases low. And so we'll we'll continue to rely on the the kuliana of our of our ohana to keep everybody safe. On Monday, we started our 47th year as Parker School and our faculty have been back this week preparing and actually have spent most of the summer engaging in professional development through both public and private grants to support that that professional development. So we're coming to the into the year with lots of energy. We're also welcoming welcoming back a number of employees that left Parker over the over the history. And we have kind of three significant people that are coming back to to teach again at Parker School and are happy to do that. We also, much like Amy, we had a very stable employment in our teaching ranks and only are replacing a few teachers this year. We welcome 60 students or we will be welcoming 60 students to Parker School this year. New students, about 330 overall, 110 in our lower school, 96 in our middle school and 123 in our in our upper school. Things that we're engaging in this year, we're engaging in a strategic plan, kind of thinking about the future of the of the school. And now so much has changed in in the world and in education, we're reflecting on what our role and responsibilities are as educators to prepare them for a different place than that we might have thought about in 2019. As many of you know, I've been here just since 2020, so I don't know Parker School or Hawaii and anything other than a pandemic. So I'm certainly looking forward to what as we as we roll our way out of it, we're not out there yet, but it's because we define normal and settle into that place. Absolutely looking forward to that. One of the things that I one of the fun things I'd love to share with you is we're we've undertaken an initiative in our snack shop with support from the Waimea Community Foundation to to be more nutritious, to be more local and to be more sustainable in the food that we provide to to our students. We don't have a meal program per se. But we do have vendors that come in. And so we're working with them and working with the things that we do in the retail space. We've been able to provide free fruit, free hand fruit for any student that that needs a snack throughout the day. We'll rely on our community to continue to provide for that. I'm looking forward to to traditions, traditions that I haven't experienced yet, traditions that are highly valued at the school. September ninth, we will have our fall barbecue for the first time since I've been here. We are opening that up to alums and I'm looking around the screen at several alums that we'd love to have you have you back on campus to to be part of our ohana. So and we're also looking forward to being out in the community again and engaging in in service that supports supports Waimea. It's been difficult to find in the pandemic. Agencies are less suspicious of teenagers and and coming into their organizations during a pandemic. So we're looking forward to to starting that again. So again, James, thank you for bringing us all together and it's wonderful to see everyone.
Absolutely. Thank you, Stephen. And of course, thank you to the rest of our educators, our administrators, Tammy Janus, Amy Kalah, Kim Ilani, Nicole, Canoa, Stephen, and Fred. Really appreciate your time and your effort in helping to lead our Waimea schools. Mahalo nui. And really, at this time, we're gonna we have a little bit of time left here tonight and don't want to keep everyone on too late. So about the next 10 minutes, I'd like to take some time sharing some questions with our educators, our administrative school educators here. So I'd like to welcome in Mary Beth Lecheck, one of our board members to pose these questions to our our school leaders here. Thanks, Mary Beth.
Great. Mahalo to all of our school leaders for joining us today. And again, it's as James mentioned, it's a very stressful time, the beginning of school. And so we'll just dive right in. If anybody wants to answer the question, just raise your hand and James James will call on you. Even before COVID, some of our Waimea families struggled with food insecurity and some had no technology connectivity at home. These are situations only exacerbated by the pandemic. While the school year is only just beginning, what issues are your family struggling with? Or are there any challenges that you anticipate the community could potentially help with?
I'll start with you. Go ahead, Janice. Thanks for jumping in.
Yeah, so I I do my 10 second wait time and then I jump in. So we really need a bus driver. So our families are having trouble getting to school. And I've asked Patty Cook to see if I couldn't get a meeting with Tim Richards to talk about some of the things that the Heliyon is doing in terms of free rides. And it might benefit not just Waimea Middle School, but it could potentially benefit Parker and HPA if we can get the kids on public transportation that's safe. So that's something that I'm doing that I'm looking for some feedback on and some some kookua from the community.
Thank you, Janice. Anyone else want to take a jump at that one? Kim Ilani, thank you.
Hello again. So one of the things that we saw our families struggle with was just after school care. So because of COVID, it was greatly impacted and a lot of people had to work odd times just to make ends meet. So one of the things that Canoa is doing is we're welcoming welcoming back our after-school care program. And during the summer, we also opened our summer program back up and tried to include some of the community members. So we've started at a smaller point after COVID and now we're growing. But that's one of the the needs that was greatly felt over the past two years for our ohana.
If I could just add a little bit onto what Kim Ilani just shared, I think the opportunities for extracurriculars, you know, sports and clubs and things after school for the entire community for the Kiki to really meet across the schools and mingle with each other and expand their learning outside of the formal classroom is really a high need right now. And I see more opportunities opening up, but I feel like there's a big window there for the for the community to step up and offer more of those opportunities that could really support our efforts outside of formal school day.
Thank you, Nicole. And Amy, it was up to you then.
I was just briefly going to say, you know, food insecurity continues to be a major issue in our community. And I know I really wanted to put the the plug in and the the pat on the back for the Thursday night meals held in St. James Circle. They just do such a fantastic job. I noticed today they have the tent set up and they're starting to have people actually sit down and eat instead of just driving through. But I would just encourage everybody to continue to do what they can to support the food baskets and the food pantries around town and get out and help with things like the the community meal in St. James Circle.
Thank you, Amy. Mary Beth, you want to throw another question there?
Sure. Um, does your school have the sufficient PPE supplies that you feel that it needs masks, gloves, sanitizers, home tests, all of those kinds of things? Right. Lots of nods, lots of nods. Everybody is nodding. Oh, that's great news. Okay. So I'll move on to the next question then. So and many of you touched on this before, but I just wanted to give an opportunity to expand if anybody wanted to. Many people are focused particularly in the media and politicians on how students are left behind or have faced educational loss due to COVID. Do you think the biggest issues facing your students are academic or and or social emotional? And what any additional plans do you have to address either of those?
Yes, Tammy.
You know, I think we've experienced probably equal amount. I wouldn't say academic outweighed social emotional. They're probably pretty even. And the severity probably ranges equally. And it's a really trying to put in those systems of support. You know, we have a strong after-school tutoring program for our language learners, which was really helpful and built the sense of belonging and connection that that population was really longing for. So that was nice to have that opportunity. And then within the school day, having a really robust literacy program and addressing the needs of our students who were two and three years below grade level. So we saw a large number, two and three below. And by the end of the year, through that literacy program and the in-school tutoring, you know, seeing that almost every student really making a one years gain or, you know, up in the 60s, 70s, 80s percent. So that was nice. Social emotionally, we're trying something new this year. It's called Hazel Health. And so it is an online like a therapeutic program where a certified therapist comes on to try to help. We found a big need in the community that our families needed a therapist and there was a waitlist for months and months and months. And there was a lot of needs couldn't get addressed, begging, what do I do? I need help. And it's, you know, as a school, we're, you know, trying to figure that that out. And after school was really the big piece of it. So engaging in Hazel Health, which is an online program that can maybe bring some of those resources to our families.
Thank you, Tammy. Anyone else want to take a stab at that one? Kim Ilani?
So something that Canoa implemented was, we call it our KLP team. So it's our ohana papa and it's how to support the families. And and so we don't look at it just like as a behavioral aspect, but we look at it as a like a booster, something that acknowledges everything that's unique about families, unique about the student. But what a piece of that team is is our SEL. So we have our our counselor and our behavior specialist, our SEC, all of these people are part of the team as well as the kumu. And we've implemented social emotional learning schoolwide, which has vastly increased because we all know like the social emotional well-being of students impacts their academics. So we've really tried to increase that over the the past couple of years and look at it holistically as like a booster of self-esteem, of identity, but project and place-based goes well in with social and emotional learning because it builds identity. So just being solid on our cultural foundations as well as project-based learning and culture-based learning builds all of that together. So and the community is a big, big component in that, like just the partnerships that we formed and hopefully form in the future, all plays to the role of increasing academics as well as those those social and emotional well-being of not just the students, but the ohana.
Mahalo. And Fred, I saw your hand go up. So Fred, do you want to share anything else?
No, that's really just to dovetail that, you know, the academic piece is is real, but also we have metrics that measure that. And the social emotional piece is so much harder to quantify. And so supporting our school counselors with programs and professional development is is critical and something that we all need to be responsible for.
Thank you, Fred. Yes, Janice.
So we received a two-year OHA grant for an ohana engagement facilitator. And so we'll be reaching out in the next 40 days to our families through a variety of contact points, whether it's class dojo or phone calls or face-to-face meetings or virtual meetings. And we're really grateful for the grant writing done by Pat Rice so that we can afford some liaison between our school and our school community.
Thank you, Janice. And Amy, I saw I saw you, your hand go up as well.
Sorry. I I was just really reflecting on how much schools have changed and how so much more is demanded of schools. But I also feel very fortunate that, you know, we all have our our Kiki, you know, we hold them dear because we know they're the future. And it's the whole society really that has been impacted. And it's not just, you know, the needs, social emotional learning or academic needs. We need to just encompass everyone and hold them dear and do everything we can to hold our society together, whether it's we're talking about the pandemic or gun violence or or terroristic threatening or whatever it might be, all of that stuff we're having to deal with. So anything we can do collectively as a as a society is is important. And it just feels great to hear all these wonderful programs and things that are in place. So, thank you.
Thanks, Amy. Yes, Stephen.
Yeah, I echo what everybody said about social emotional and it's been a really difficult time for for lots of students and, you know, struggling with masks on or masks off and 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 kind of regulating emotions, especially for our younger kids, right? Not seeing a smile and those kinds of things has been difficult. So we're really also investing in social emotional learning. One of the things I think that's interesting as an independent school and I would I would assume that Fred is Fred or HPA is seeing this as well as in our application process, we see trends of where there may be academic deficiencies. And so we're looking at what are the resources we have that we can dedicate to the community? And we're seeing specific deficiencies in math. So what can we do with our faculty to offer resources or offer enrichment to to the larger Waimea Waimea community, North Hawaii community to help help address some of those gaps in in summer programs and things. So we're hopefully will bring some you know, bring something to to help everyone.
Thank you, Stephen. Mary Beth, do you have a quick question that we could end on possibly?
I am going to again end on a positive note. And so many of you have shared what you're looking forward to most at school this year. And is there anything else special that you'd want to highlight or anything that you really want? If you any message that you have for the school students and families that will have either started this week or you'll be seeing in the next couple of weeks? Any last words that you want to say to them about starting school in a less weird time, but still challenging times?
Yes, Amy.
I'm always quick to talk. One of the things I'm really looking forward to is getting back to singing and chanting. We have our ukulele teacher, Mila, coming back to teach ukulele and getting our kumu lea. She did hula all last year, but just having the kids singing again and chanting and having that whole part of their life back is going to be really wonderful.
Amazing.
So we're back. Yeah, sorry. We're back right now and I'm doing crossing guard duty, which is, you know, one of those other hats that we wear for safety purposes. And I know that we're all there for the children and we're there for each other. So I'm just happy to see the smiling, waving faces of families as they start back this semester and school year. Mahalo for your time.
Thanks, Janice. Canoa?
No, I was just going to say, you know, we've talked a lot about community. We've talked a lot about collaboration and I had an opportunity, Fred doesn't know this, I had an opportunity to talk with Sally, one of his teachers at at the school and threw at a community event, we got together and we started talking talking about art. And we started to dream up an idea of having students have different art nights at different schools. So it's nothing that has been solidified, but I think just that spirit of collaboration, that spirit of wanting to get together and see people face to face again is was was is exciting and is exciting. So maybe we can, I'm just throwing it out there, we can make it happen and bring in other schools and and get kids excited about art and and connecting. So yeah, so I'm excited.
Yeah, let's do it. Let's do it, Canoa. Yeah, I think I'm we're just really excited about, one, welcoming everyone here, which is a big to-do from bringing folks from around the world. But then we've got students who literally haven't done excursions and and seen this beautiful place or been able to do service learning. And so to be able to have that relationship be reciprocal in terms of them giving and then also being able to get out into the community is is really exciting for us.
Thank you, Fred. Yes, Stephen. All right, Tammy then.
I was just going to say, you know, I I just love and really looking forward to seeing all the smiling faces, you know, and now having the masks on outside, inside, and just being able, you know, for kids who want to give hugs to their teachers or to me and just being able to embrace and and smile and laugh and see those beautiful expressions. I think it's going to be a fantastic year and and really looking forward to it.
Thank you, Tammy. Appreciate all of you and thanks for your time here this evening. Thanks, Mary Beth, for those questions. And appreciate our administrators and educators taking a moment to answer and address some of those questions and connecting with the community here. Yeah, I really hope, you know, this gave the community some insight into the minds of our our school leaders and educators and really the challenges that they're facing and what they're working on. and really the challenges that they're facing and what they're working on. And this forum, you know, presents an opportunity where they can connect with one another once again. And it's been a year. And, you know, we've gone through a lot together and grateful for all the work that they're doing to support our families beyond the classroom. All the work that they're doing to support their teachers and really inspire our Kiki and really give them a safe place and a wonderful place to grow up and learn here in Waimea. So, really grateful for all the work that you're doing as school administrators. Mahalo nui. And as we close up here this evening, I'm just going to say a last couple of words here.
Can I give a shout out to Mary Beth? Because I think she stood at the side of the road handing out school supplies to children. So, a big shout out. Yeah. And how she supports all the schools, like, the amazing work that she does for all of us. So, mahalo.
Thank you. It was nice to see students again in person. And Tammy, I, I, we have noticed that there's a lot more parents who are dropping their kids off and walking them into the classroom. So, thank you. Thank you. It's our pleasure directly across the street from an elementary school and the middle school. We feel a certain obligation to be good neighbors.
James, can I just jump in with one other? Like, I'm sorry to delay this any further, but I had this at the top of my notes and we went right by it. I just sort of wanted to remind everybody that school is back in. School buses are on the road. They have flashing lights. When those are flashing, you should stop or, and slow down. We certainly don't want any of our, any of our Kiki injured around bus loading and unloading time. So, I know it's a, it's a change from your summer brain, but just want to remind everybody to, to keep, keep our community safe.
And that's the same point with our, our crossing guards and our crosswalks in the community here too. See, if you see those flashing lights with the Kiki going across, please be mindful of our roads here in the community. So, thanks for bringing it up, Stephen. Much appreciated there. All right. Well, I won't keep you much longer, but I just wanted to thank all of our presenters one last time here for taking the time to update our viewers, our guests earlier this evening. All the different events are going on in the community. Really, really, all of you helping to lead our community going forward. So, thank you very much. Mahalo nui. And of course, thank you to all the viewers for joining us on the livestream this evening. You're welcome to revisit and re-watch this recording up on our Facebook page or up on our YouTube channel. And on behalf of Waimea Community Association Board, I wish you all good health, be well. Aloha. Have a good night, everyone.